I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Beacon Board of Education. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is standing one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
Roll call. Larry Cohen, excused. Betsy Dennis, excused. Jennifer Edge, absent. Tracy Annaleck Everett.
Here.
Christine Galbo.
Excuse?
Frank Garnett.
Here.
Georgia Pachin.
Delayed.
Bill Zoff.
Here.
Melissa Thompson.
Here.
Dr. O, would you like to review the fire exits?
Yes, I guess we have the two fire exits, one to the rear and one to our side.
Would you like to introduce our workshop tonight?
Yes, we're going to start off our workshop tonight with Mr. Eric Wright. He will do a brief presentation, sort of an update on his building.
Good evening. On behalf of the JBF school community, I would like to welcome you to JB Forest Elementary School. Tonight, I'm going to give you an update on the progress we've made throughout the course of 2013-2014 school year. We started off the year with 283 students. As of March 10, 2014, we up to 301 more students. We have two sections per class, per grade, excuse me, and we have one spectrum class, which is grades 1 through 3. As I told you guys last year, they are still the favorites. They're really ingrained in the school culture here at JBF. We also have an AM and a PM pre-K program. Throughout the course of the year, we've had several activities taking place. Our PTSO have been wonderful in terms of the support that they provided and getting a lot of these activities off the ground. Some of the activities we had during the month of February, which was a very busy month, were kindergarten Olympics. Kindergarten teachers, along with teachers at Glen, collaborated to put together an Olympic celebration. And within this celebration, students had an opportunity to learn about the history of their culture, their own culture. They made flags, I'm going back to where their family originated, and then there were activities planned based on the math module at that time. We've also had engineers, we had IBM come in, some of their engineers came in during the month of February, and they actually demonstrated some programs and things of that nature for, put on a presentation for our 4th and 5th grade students. By all accounts, from what I heard from students as well as teachers, this is probably the best year yet, so we would like to continue that in the future. We also had the Officer Field Program. That program has been taking place for the last couple of years to my knowledge, and it's been a success. You know, all of the students seem to really enjoy it. Parents' reading partners took place during the month of February, and there were lots of activities scheduled. As you see, we still have a poster up on the curtains which says JB Forest will build a grade readers. And teachers, as well as our PTSO, came together to put on many events throughout the course of the month. You know, students were kind of due for reading nightly for at least 15 minutes, and then they had to do a response to literature. And if they were successful, at the end of the week, they basically were entered into a drawing, you know, for each week that they accomplished their goals, and some prizes were... The theme was Lagos, and so at the end of the month, there was movie tickets given out to the Lego movie, as well as other great prizes. It was a real great incentive to make sure our kids are reading. Our PTSO sponsored a father-daughter dance during the month of February, and it actually let me see that we have a bunch of fathers, grandfathers, et cetera, that have really vested in the lives of children, of their children. The event was wonderful, it was touching. I actually enjoyed it myself. I had my daughter come out, and we all danced. It was great to see so many males out dressed in suits, you know, to be with their daughters. I don't know who appreciated it more, whether it was the children or was it the fathers, but I know at the end of the night, they thanked us for the event. During this month, we also have a lot of activities scheduled. We have our personal safety program last week. We have Juggle for Heart that our phys ed teacher will be running. We have an open house scheduled for March 20, and we have a math night scheduled for March 27. We basically said that in order to support our parents, as well as our students with the new Karmic Core curriculum, that we need to be out in the forefront hosting nights such as the math night, so that our parents hear from us, and they have the opportunity to go into the classrooms and become familiar with the revised curriculum that our kids are kind of due to learn. And I think that they actually appreciate it. You know, it was a little rough in the beginning. It was a little rough in the beginning, but I think that they realize that we're working together to support one another. Now, moving forward, this year, Dr. Doorwood has created, along with the district, created goals, do a five-year plan for the district, and, you know, all of us, all our administrators were kind of due to ensuring that we're putting together our goals to make sure that it's aligned with the district's goals. And one of our goals was to increase community engagement, and I think that we've done that here at JBF through our Farm-to-School Consortium. We have the gardening program, we had a trip to the farm, and then we also have the chef in the classroom. And I think most of you are familiar with the chef in the classroom. I would just inform that a little earlier that the board actually had the opportunity to have beets at one of the presentations, at one of the board meetings. Here, our kids had chocolate beet cake. Fortunately, unfortunately, I don't know, I didn't taste it, but I heard that it actually was really good.
It was good.
I don't eat beets, so I actually shy away. But one of the fun facts that I learned through the newsletter that goes out monthly after each program is that a long time ago, beets were used as a form of hair dye. I didn't know that was a fact for me, so you learn every day. Just some additional goals. So, one of the district's goals was to ensure access to rigorous curriculum, instruction and assessment that will prepare students for success in college and our career, so college and career readiness. And so, at JBF, what we did is that over the summer, we decided to look at what were some things we needed to do differently to support all of our students. So, we aligned the school-wide literacy response to intervention plan to the goals of the district RTI plan. And what I mean by that is that we had to look at all of our students, and we did that by assessing them, assessing them with the DRA assessment in September. In doing that, we were able to see where our students were actually struggling, and which students that we need to target for some of the interventions that we were going to put in place. We also have Fanta's and Penel assessment this year in addition to the DRA assessment, so all of our students will be assessed up to five times. As we identified the students in need of additional support, we began to... And, excuse me, let me take you back a second. As we identified the students, we had conversations through what I like to call data dialogue sessions, and that takes place with classroom teachers, the reading teacher and myself. And at that time, the teachers present all of the students whom they felt are in need of additional support. And then it's our job, it's our job to determine what interventions we're going to provide. Now, we have a host of interventions that we put in place this year. We have intervention for Florentine, we have interventions for cognitive awareness, interventions for comprehension. And so, we determine which intervention is needed by students, and then we work from So, in order to make sure that that comes to light, what we had to do was create an academic intervention team, I like to say AIS for short, and that team provides services to our students four times a week. And basically, the team consists of our reading teacher and also a lot of our aides. And our aides here do a tremendous job of working with students to ensure that their reading is improving. And on Fridays, every Friday, that team meets with the reading teacher to discuss the progress of our students, and then from there, if I'm not actively reading, the reading teacher reports back to me. In that way, we're able to see if we need to change interventions for good, or, you know, being that another intervention may be needed, or if that student will be able to progress in the classroom, or if we need to try another intervention because the student isn't making progress. I can actually say that, you know, from the data dialogue sessions that we've had, the majority of our students are making a lot of progress, you know, which is a good thing. You know, that's the goal of RTI, the goal of AIS, and so I think that we have a plan that is beginning to meet the needs of our students. So, if I take you back for a moment, at the end of September, in order for our teachers to be able to have the data accessible, we put in place data binders this year. And each home teacher has a data binder where they house all the data from different assessments that take place throughout the course of the year. So therefore, when we have our data dialogue sessions, informed decisions can be made because the data is available. We meet every six to eight weeks after assessments are done, and that's where we begin to talk about the progress of students. So, one of the other goals of the district this year was to create a learning environment centered on strong socio-emotional support systems. So celebrate, that's important, because one of the things that we need to do is we need to celebrate the success, the success of students, you know, we need to get positive reinforcement. So, what we've done through our discipline team this year is that we've created incentives for students to do well. Back in December, January, well, January, we had a winter Wonderland celebration, and for K-2, it was something that took place during the day, and for 3rd to 5th graders, it was a dance that took place after school. And to see students so excited to actually make it to the dance was a good thing. It meant that they did all their work, it meant that their behavior was on point as well. And so I think that as we continue to put these positive reinforcements in place, I think that that's another way that we'll meet the needs of our students. Additionally, we have the socio-emotional learning program that David Levine brought in as well. He goes into several of our classrooms, and he meets with the students there and does presentations where he sings songs, et cetera. I think that it has been a big support for us, but I like to think that our program that we have in place, that we built in place, is just making our school behavior much more susceptible as well. So, I ended it with a picture of hands, and I just think that, you know, here at JBF, I like to think of us as all hands on deck. You know, we really want to meet the needs of our students, we have to work together in order to do so, and I think that we are doing that. You know, I came in, it was like I was a new principal all over again last year, you know, although I had experience for several years, I had to learn new procedures, and I was able to do that with the help of fellow administrators. But also, just as important, with the support of my staff, and they've been a tremendous help in the progress that we're all making, and I think that as long as we continue with all hands on board, we'll continue making that progress. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions about anything? Thank you.
Thank you. So if everybody's going to keep their seats so they can see the next presentation, you want to do that?
They're going to use the same board, so I'll stay here.
So, next up is Ron Mackey, our Director of Transportation, who will be presenting on the transportation budget. The driver may have a little bit of a cold in battle, so... I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak with them this evening. I'd like to discuss a few things that are vital to transportation, our fleets, our routes, the staffing and the services that we provide. Can anybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good. A little bit about our fleet statistics right now, we have a total of 69 vehicles, 32 buses, one of which is equipped with wheelchair lift, 24 vans, one of which is what we call TOS, or temporarily out of service. That's different from POS, which is permanently out of service. And then we have five wheelchair vans that we use to transport students who are using wheelchairs. We also have a number of cars in the fleet and one suburban, so that's a total of 69 As it stands right now, we have 48 routes, and I'll say routes in terms of 48 lines, servicing 193. It's actually, I believe, 196 trips daily. Because we operate in multiple tiers, our drivers will go out, for example, they may do as many as three different trips in the morning and three different trips in the afternoon, stacked into different tiers, high school, middle school, elementary. And then we also have a number of buses that have to transport students out of district that may do two tiers. They'll do an out-of-district elementary, come back and do an in-district elementary, for example. Some of our buses from Forest will do that. We always kind of panic because those buses, if they're caught in traffic, we're always calling Kelly saying, "We're on our way, Kelly." So right now, we're using 13 buses for the middle school and high school, 21 buses in the morning, and 21 buses in the afternoon for the elementary routes. And we also transport to 22 private and parochial school locations and 23 special ed locations. So when you think about transportation and fulfilling our obligations, we're transporting to 51 schools. The staffing statistics that we have, we have 57 drivers, myself included. When I say drivers, that means those people who are qualified to drive school buses. So our dispatcher, our head mechanic, I'm sorry, dispatcher, our head bus driver, our mechanics, just about everyone in the transportation department is able to drive if they're called upon, with one or two exceptions. 32 monitors, seven substitute monitors, one supervisor, one dispatcher, one head bus driver, one part-time typist, one full-time head mechanic, and we have actually one mechanic right now, we have two vacant positions that we're looking to fill. If anybody knows a mechanic, tell them to call. And I have to say that the staff that we have, they do a really wonderful job. For many of them, students that we service, we're the first Beacon City School District face they see in the morning, and the last face that represents the district they see in the afternoon. I always, when I do training with staff, I always ask the question, "How many of you wanted to be bus drivers when you grew up?" Very few hands go up. It's something that people find their way into, sometimes it's a second career, sometimes it's a primary career, but it's not something that people generally, "I'm going to be a bus driver," maybe some of the younger kids. Services that we provide in addition to the home-to-school, school-to-home, we do field trips, sports trips, work programs, we have two daily programs that come out of the high school every day, they go work with students that go into the community, to school-to-work programs. We provide transportation to childcare locations within the district. We have the after-school programs, the academic intervention services. I'm still learning all these acronyms. Five oh four medical requests, displaced students under the Machete Benno Act, and we also do some in-district special services during the day when we have students that need to get to services in the other schools, we do that transportation as well. Then, one that you can barely see under the curtain, that says vehicles reaching the end of their useful lifespan. We have a number of buses that we have on the road right now, we have 2,000 Bluebirds, these are vehicles that are 14 years old. You can see the mileage, and again, now when I started working on this presentation, it was back in December, so keeping track of all the miles on all the vehicles, I had been putting this together since that time. So these were the mileages for each vehicle as the end of mid, just before we went over the break. Two vans, we have a '97 Geralden that's 17 years old, and we have a 2002 GMC Corvette. This is for the vans, this is the chassis style, and this is the body style. There's different providers that make different body styles for buses. We also have a car that is pretty much on its way out that we need to surplus, so these are the vehicles that we have. Generally, the industry standard for replacing vehicles is usually around 10 years for a bus and seven years for a van. But our mechanics do a lot of preventive maintenance and really work hard to keep the vehicles running. And they are subject, each one of our vehicles is subject to a DOT inspection twice a year. So every six months, there's a New York State Department of Transportation inspector who comes to our... Actually, he comes, I should refresh this, he's out of garage all the time, but every vehicle gets inspected twice a year. So, they do go through some rigorous testing, and these are not your typical go down to the corner and a guy's going to put a sticker on it. They're very thorough inspections. Some of the issues that we have with the lack of replacement is that the repair costs will increase, and then we need to increase budget increases to cover those repairs. The possibility of more road calls, towing time, downtime of the vehicle, that's actually a big problem for us, you know, as Eric will testify too, sometimes they'll have a number of sporting events going. We actually, a couple of weeks ago, we had to run up to Arlington to borrow a taillight from Arlington to put on a bus so we could send a sports trip out. So, we go Arlington taillight. The inability to handle breakdowns. Actually, we've given it back. Contracted routes, bringing in contractors to do routes. I have to say, with the proposition passing the last three years, we've been able to reduce our repair cost by roughly $22,000 a year, well, over the past year. Because being able to run newer equipment is a big contributor to that. Other implications, we get a lot of requests for field trips, and we're always telling the teachers, "You have to be back by 1:45." I don't know if there's any teachers here, and we go, "You have to be back by 1:45 because we need those buses to take students home." Sometimes it's on days we have enough, and sometimes it's cutting it real close. So we want to make sure that we can cover these trip requests, and that's why I always tell people, send the request in so we know what's happening that particular day. Longer bus runs, if we have less equipment, we're going to have to run lower runs, doubling up routes, more crowded bus runs. I don't need to tell you what happens when you get a bunch of children in a very small space, okay? You know, it's interesting, the DOT defines a student. A typical high school student is weighing 120 pounds. What's even more funnier than that is they find typical drivers weighing 150 pounds. So when they talk about bus capacity, that's what they're talking about. So younger fleets, again, are usually equipped with more up-to-date safety equipment and are less prone to breakdown. Spare vehicles, we need to have spare vehicles, and State Education Department recommends that an operation should have enough spares on hand to adequately cover extracurricular trips at peak season, taking into account breakdowns, DOT inspections and regular maintenance. Vehicle shortages can disrupt an operation significantly, create safety problems such as overloading and delays. So we should have at least one spare bus per type for every 10 buses assigned to regular routes. So this is what we're trying to maintain. And some of the services that we provide, some of the reasons we need spares, unscheduled maintenance and inspections, I'm sorry, scheduled maintenance and inspections, unscheduled breakdowns and repairs, transportation, displaced students. We never know, I know there was a fire in town the other day, anyone heard about it? There were students, Beacon students that live in that, we need to transport them from their temporary housing location to school. Mid-year special ed placement into additional schools. We get IEP changes all throughout the year, we never know when we're going to have to go to another school. Sports trips, field trips. And one thing that's kind of interesting here in Beacon, what's the main road that runs through Beacon? Route 52 and 9D. Just hold on to that for a second. Vehicles that we received last year, so we were able to put some new vehicles in fleet, namely three large-size buses and three vans. And I like to look at what's happening in terms of the growth in the district. This is kind of all of our students all laid out on our map, there's no names or anything, but there's all our kids, and they're color-coded by elementary school and whatnot. So we look at growth in the district, and just a couple of things that I noticed here. We have a new development going in off Route 52, Bishop Keel Woods. Right now, we only have one student in there, but it's, they're still building houses, and it's within our district. There's another condominium complex, I'm sorry, townhouse complex going in down at the bottom of Town View, and I believe that one's supposed to have a few hundred units in there. So, we need to look... So, we need to look at being able to transport these kids once families move in. People may be familiar with the roundout West Branch Tunnel bypass that the New York D E C is putting in. There's a multi-year phased construction project to place a bypass tunnel for the New York City Aqueduct system. They're taking, putting a... They're putting in a tunnel from Newburgh over into Wapentress Falls. So there's construction happening there in different phases. So we've been trying to keep track of what's going on with that phase. You can kind of see, here's the Hudson, this is over in Newburgh, this is over in Wapentress Falls, just a little north of the Chelsea area. So, the number of trucks that are going to be going up and down nine D is something that we're keeping a close eye on. This was, I told you to hold on to it for a minute, I don't know if you can see this, but this little star thing right here, this is Route nine D coming through the district. And here's our schools. On February sixth, we had an accident right here, not us, but there was an accident right there around two o'clock, shut down the road for an hour. At two forty-three, there was another accident here on Route nine D, just near the radio stations. Fifty-two, I'm sorry, on fifty-two. So that was a fun-filled afternoon. We had to get real creative in terms of, we had buses that were stuck here going each direction and couldn't get turned around. So one of our buses went out, we had a spare driver go out and cover, I believe it was Route two for the high school. By the time Route two got cleaned up, he was out. He covered another route, Route eight for the elementary, because Route eight was sitting here with his kids trying to get up to here. So, that bus covered the middle school runs and by the time these guys unloaded, they were able to get to their elementaries. So that's another reason why we need to have spares, because we never know what's going on. Also, whenever there's an accident that happens on the bridge, what does that do to Route nine D? So, we get those traffic alerts, I come through on my cell phone and stuff. So we're always thinking, "Okay, what are we going to have to do if the buses that went over to these schools can't get back to cover their in-district schools?" Always an interesting morning when that happens. Okay, so we're talking about unmet vehicle needs. What do we need to do to keep the fleet afloat? And again, this is what we're looking at to maintain our current ability to meet the transportation needs of the district. We're trying to balance our minimal needs with what we feel is the realistic proposition to pass. And this is what we're looking at here. I'm sorry. Sorry, bear with me here. I must have loaded it a long while. I was wondering why something would show up. This is what we're looking at here. We're looking at getting one van, an estimate of forty-four thousand dollars. One wheelchair bus, now this is a wheelchair bus, it's got multiple layout capacities. We can take it, we can change the seating arrangement on it. It's like all of these seats on mountainous tracks on the floor. So it's a flexible design. One of the things that happened to us last year, we had a school that was operating here in the district, right off Route fifty-two, servicing a number of students with disabilities that relocated to Poughkeepsie in April. So what we were doing was, we were servicing those students with two vans in the district that were operating on multiple tiers. So these drivers went out and they picked up their first tier, dropped those kids off. They picked these kids up in the middle tier and took them to this school that wound up closing. And then they took a third line out. But what happened was, when the school moved to Poughkeepsie, there was no time to run those third tiers and get the schools, the buses back in district to cover the rest of the students that they needed to do. So one of the things that we're looking at doing is getting a larger-sized wheelchair bus that is, has a flexible layout. Now, it's basically the same as the seventy-two passenger buses, but it has more specialized equipment and wheelchair securing equipment on there, lifts. So it's a little bit more expensive. We've been going with wheelchair vans in the past, but we're looking to meet this particularity of this one school by bringing this vehicle into service. And then we'd like to, oops, we'd like to get two more additional seventy-two passenger vehicles. So the total we're looking at right now, I just want to make sure I have the right total up here.
That's right.
Three ninety-seven, five hundred, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Now these prices that I've quoted are based on New York State O G S, or Office of General Services contracts. All the bus quotes include the sign-on-camera systems, which not only allow us to see what's going on inside the bus, but it allows us to see where the bus has been. And all of the wheelchair vehicles recorded included front and rear A C because a lot of these students have medical needs as well. So we want to make sure that we have the ability to service those medical needs as well. There's a little clip here. Still getting used to my new laptop. There's really cool guitar music on this. There's a training video that we show some of the new drivers. And it starts off by showing empty schools and the importance of having school transportation for students to get to schools and what a vital role that we play in terms of education. So, I want to thank you for the time and if there's any questions?
This is going to be a separate proposition, that's what we're planning on doing this? Okay. And the funding for it, is this going to be something that we're going to pay out over a couple of years or is this something that we pay all that once?
Since we've had the tax cap, it's been more advantageous for us to actually raise the levy for that amount and pay for that. And then we also get, in the following year, we get about fifty-seven, fifty-eight percent back in transportation. So that starts in the following year.
Okay. And is this a net addition to the fleet or are those other vehicles that you mentioned were, you know, high mileage? Are those the idea to replace them?
Right. We're looking to replace vehicles. If you see here, we're looking at one van, two buses and one wheelchair van. And if I were to... Go back. We talked about replacing two buses, those two two thousand Bluebirds, seventeen-year-old van and a twelve-year-old van. So that's pretty much what we're looking to do, is to replace those particular units.
How many drivers are coming into your bus garage, getting the training and then leaving to go into another district? How competitive are we with driver salaries?
I can tell you, I can tell you from personal experience, one of the things that I've noticed is over there. And I want to say not that long ago, five to six to eight to ten years ago, every school this year, every private school was contractor had a sign out that said, "Drivers wanted." I can tell you because I actually installed one of those signs at a previous employer. And it's kind of interesting with the economy the way it is right now. We have people who are going out to driver schools and getting their driver's licenses, their C D Ls, and coming to us. So, we actually are in a pretty good position where we're able to be really selective with the people that we're hiring. So, it's very strange. It's gotten to the point where actually, you know, I have good candidates come in that I can't hire and I've called people and said, "This guy came in, I just don't have a position for him. I don't know if you can use him or not." It's very, it's very new. Transportation directors aren't used to being this lucky, so. Thank you very much. Will we be needing this anymore, the projector?
We have a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The board will return as quickly as possible.